We should be good.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We will call the City of Niswa Regular Council Meeting on this Tuesday, September sixteenth at seven PM to order. If we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one agent undergone into this one with liberty and justice for all.
And if you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to take a brief moment of silence for the horrific events that happened in Utah last week. If you'll please join me in a moment of silence to honor Charlie Kirk. Thank you. Next up on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion from council to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, the agenda is approved. Next up is our consent calendar. And again, notice to the public, all the matters listed are considered routine by council and will all be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time council votes on the motion. Do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Say it.
Any discussion on the consent calendar? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent calendar is approved. Next up, we have our open forum. And we allow for public comment during this time, which is limited to two minutes. I will hold the timer. If you would like to address the council, please come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and your time can be in.
This microphone?
Oh, Dave, I'm gonna do you after this to see for your presentation.
Sure.
Okay. Going once? Going twice?
Melis Lynn Straight for the address, P O Box Crosby. I have children and grandchildren living in Niswa, so. I'm attending this meeting because we, the people, voted for the employees that are chosen by us, the mayor and the members. We voted for this leadership to give us relief from overtaxing, overspending, convoluted ordinances that affect us homeowners and business owners. As employers, you need to be involved and ask questions as your voted employees work through the messy, burdensome laws and ordinances. Teamwork means leaving personal differences on the bench when working together to create a win for the team. When your emotions and feelings interfere with the job benefiting the community which you are employed, you fail and then the community suffers. When we, the people, as employers or employees, treat each other and humans with respect, kindness, and empathy, we win every time. Offenses just keep you from your best life and helping others enjoy theirs. I hope this last week of events in Utah clearly teach all of us that it's okay to have different views without getting offended by a different view than we take a person's life. I will remind us that Matthew five twenty, it says, "Anyone who looks with intent has already committed it in their heart." What you think is the same as doing it. Let's choose our thoughts, which leads to our feelings, being happy or offended. Let's, as a community of people, look to do what's best for everyone, not just a few with deep pockets or special interests. Let's support less government overreach and keep them accountable as our employees of we, the people, for the next generation to come. I support the mayor a hundred percent and her current actions that are driving us to less burdensome ordinances and excessive government spending. Let the burden of proof be on the elected officials when it comes to them asking for anything that causes more burdens on we, the people, such as new buildings for law enforcement, City Hall, et cetera. It's been done much more effectively in the past. I recommend we revisit better ways to do the same jobs for less. Thank you for your being employees of we, the people, who choose to have integrity, honor, and most of all, good character. There's, when no one is watching you, you're always being watched. Support each other and support that we, the people, voted for. Less, not more. Anyone trying to have a vote of no confidence for what we voted for would be going against we, the people, who voted into office. Don't vote against your employers. We voted for your team. Be a team member. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, excuse me, I have a horrible cough. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Okay, then, under open forum, I'm gonna call on Dave Winkelman, who has a presentation on solar panels.
Thank you, David Winkelman's my name. I am the owner of a company called Winkelman Solar Developers. Our office is west of Brainerd. I've been in solar since the nineteen eighties. And we put up solar on hundreds of buildings, over three hundred and fifty projects that I have helped oversee over the last thirty-five years. And this is a program with free money. We're not gonna be asking you for money. We're gonna be giving you money from state grants. And the clicker. Do I click the center one? The edge one?
Yeah.
So this was set up by the government. They have rounds of this for the schools, but now it's called solar on public buildings. So it just opened up at the end of August. There's fourteen million dollars available for grants. And then there's a direct pay tax credit for costs not covered by the grants. So the only people that can get this grant are cities, counties, tribal nations, townships, other government buildings and lands. It has to be owned by the government and it has to have a utility meter at the location. So it's not a large system, where it's only a forty kilowatt system. So seventy percent of the cost of that is a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That's what the grant will give you. And then down the bottom, the direct pay will cover the remaining thirty percent of the cost of the system. The only cost might be the cost for grant writers, and we might be able to get them for free as well, because there's some grants for writing grants. So the applications are open now and they close on November fourteenth. So there's some haste to this. That's why I came to the council meeting tonight, because we want to get the application going as soon as possible, because it's first come, first served. So these are details. I'll just scoot through this, the direct pay and the grant. There's help from Clean Energy Resource Team. We're developers, so we do most of the work for you. And like I said, there's free consultation with it. I have some handouts here. The details rather than spend the time here to read the cash flow statement. Thank you. So we're not asking for money. We're looking to give money away. And the catch here is that we have to respond quickly. We have to get an application going. I went out to the wastewater treatment facility tonight, and that seems to be an ideal location. You got good, flat land. You got a meter out there. I'm sure it's using a couple thousand bucks a month worth of electricity. This system can come in and give you at least five hundred dollars a month of savings on your bill. So I mentioned my company, what we do. I want to mention that solar reduces emissions. Solar is a non-polluting form of clean energy. And mercury in the fish are the big problem with me. My family loves fish. You can't eat the walleyes anymore because of mercury. So there's a thirty-year warranty on solar panels. I put up my first solar array at the Eco Domes up by South Long Lake. Maybe some of you have been out there. What we do is we get multiple bids for you. We act as general contractors. So we don't get paid in the front end. We get paid in the back end. We just got a new solar hot air furnace at our shop. You can stop out and see that west of town. We've done a bunch of buildings for cities. We've done twelve things for the city of Saint Cloud, the library, the YMCA building, the wastewater treatment plant, two of the firehouses, and a couple other things for Saint Cloud. And we've got East Gull Lake right now and Sylvan Town Hall. We just finished Sylvan Town Hall. And we're also working on Fifty Lakes Town Hall, same size, forty kilowatts. This is what a forty kilowatt array looks like on the ground. It's about a hundred panels. And that will be enough to power four homes. And they're warranted for thirty years, but they'll last longer than thirty years. The panels I put up thirty years ago are still producing more than eighty percent of what they were new. What we do is we work with contractors, the best contractors all over the state, and we get bids for you. So we'll go out, identify, we'll do the feasibility, we'll do the site assessment, and then we get bids from these contractors. They're all certified. They all have electrical license and contracting license in Minnesota. And this, you can't read that, but basically with that, I don't know if, can you make that larger? Towards, here's what we. Excuse me. We basically design the job, do the feasibility site assessments. We learn the local power company's rules. Who is the power company out at wastewater? Is that Minnesota Power?
Minnesota Power.
Okay, good. So then we also build realistic production estimates, get long-term environmental attributes. And can you scroll down, please? So our payment comes at the end of the project. We earn a percentage of the project from the winning installer. So we asked for three years of site control. We want to make sure that we have control of the site, so we don't do all the work and somebody else takes it away from us. So that's pretty much all that I have to say. Thank you for letting me talk. I'm gonna be meeting with Tom Blumer. Your Public Works guy, is he here? Next week, I'll go over the details with him and get it started in the right manner here. Any questions?
Any questions from council? No, none. Thank you. We have a council retreat on Thursday, so we'll make sure to add this to our discussion list then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're at reports. Our city attorney is still, he texted me that he was just in Brainerd, so we'll start with you, Bill.
Hello, everyone. So some of the stuff I've been working on is Gull Lake Trail Phase Four B, doing the construction administration, observation and stuff like that for the project. The Niswa Lake Park, designing a bathroom facility and extending the trail into the park area. City Hall Street and Church Street, we're working on the preliminary layout or plans for City Hall Street and Church Street. Let's see, oh, then the thing that Jesse wanted me to talk about is I put some PDF together of like the twenty-sixth street project. Well, actually, twenty-seven is in here, too. So this map just shows the streets that are involved in the twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven, the red ones. Well, most of the red ones are in twenty-twenty-six. Upper Roy Lake Road has been moved to twenty-twenty-seven at this time. So, and so what we're, I guess what I was gonna try and talk to you about is just kind of the cost that we've come up with for the cost estimate and the overhead. And I've also included for twenty-six, I tried to estimate the total easement cost. Just so you know, I did talk to John with PFM about a lot of these easement costs and about the total project cost for twenty-six and twenty-seven, and explained to him, you know, like how I came up with it and the process that I went through. And he told me that, yeah, he was happy with the information that we gave him, so he could move forward and come up with his numbers for Thursday. So then the next sheet shows the cost estimate for, like a summary for all the streets in the twenty-twenty-sixth street improvements. I basically tried to summarize the total, I guess. Shows the contingency, the overhead, and again, the estimated total project, or estimated total easement costs. That's, now it's at four point four five million. Again, we took out Upper Roy Lake Road out of this in order to reduce the cost and didn't have to deal with the easements right now in twenty-twenty-six. The next sheet explains, kind of, just kind of summarizes the number of easements that we are trying to acquire. So there's a total of, well, twenty-three easements over twenty-eight parcels. Eight of them are temporary. Again, I tried to estimate with talking to other people in our company and other cities as to what that rate might be. So that's how that number was arrived at. The next, next one, we've delved in a little bit into City Hall Street, Church Street, and Niswa Avenue a little bit, but not to the point where we can really adjust the cost estimate, but that can come, happen here fairly soon with City Hall Street and Church Street as we move forward with our preliminary plans and stuff like that. So what I did on this sheet, or the one before this, is I tried to summarize the totals for just the street portions of the project, and that was a total project of like two point nine three million. The parking lots we separated, and that was about six hundred and fifty-two thousand. And then the stuff that's in Grandview Lodge, separated that, too, and that total was one point four nine million. With a lot of these ones in twenty-twenty-seven, we still have to go through the scope of work and figure out exactly what is gonna be included in those. There's some decisions that might have to be made in some of these areas regarding drainage and other infrastructure, whether we're gonna add it or not. Then the next thing we're gonna talk about, and I have a schedule that I created, but for the twenty-twenty-sixth streets, even twenty-twenty-seven, we're at a point where we can finish the plans and specs and the timeframe that we have, which was, we are gonna meet with the residents in, at the Public Works Meeting in November, end of November. And then, after that, finish the plans in time to go through the approval process with the council to approve the plans, authorize, ad forbid, and get everything ready so that we can advertise and have the, we need to have that public hearing prior to the, probably basically prior to the award of the project. So like I said, I think we're on track with the twenty-twenty-sixth streets. And we're gonna, we're in the process of creating a proposal for the twenty-twenty-seven, which is gonna be reviewed at the Public Works Meeting here. Do I have, any questions?
Does council have any questions for Bill? Oh, yes, if you can, do you want to come to the microphone?
It's a lot of information and a lot of money that's talked about very fast. We live near Grandview.
Okay.
So when Grandview does stuff, it affects us. And I have no idea what you have just told me that might affect us or might not affect us. I mean, Linden Boulevard is where we live, and that's Grandview. So I just, I'd like to, maybe just as an example, you could tell me, what is the impact for the people on east or west Linden of what you're talking about? I have no idea at this point.
Well, our discussions with Tom Blumer with the city is that the current scope of work for east and west Linden is that the part that's part of Grandview that's in their Grandview property would be part of the twenty-twenty-seventh street improvements. The part that's been overlaid outside of the Grandview area would be a future project that might occur, you know, whenever the road needs to have it happen.
Does Grandview own the land that the roads are on? The Grandview roads? I mean, Grandview owns the property, but who owns, who owns west Linden?
Portion of west Linden is privately owned, is my understanding. And then the other portion is city-owned, correct?
City, right.
City right-of-way.
Who owns the path from east Linden to west Linden?
So I think this conversation's getting a little bit.
Yeah, sir, I wanna, and not to disrespect anyone here, but for these reports, if we want to have more of a dialogue, we could do that separately, because we want to stay on track with our council meeting. But Tom, if you want to go ahead and answer, and then we can.
Sure. So I think, I've met you before, but with east and west Linden, outside of the areas of the resort, we're not gonna be touching those in twenty-twenty-seven.
That's helpful.
The areas inside the resort, we have to come back to, because we only put an inch and a half of new pavement on them. It won't sustain the truck traffic that's generated in the resort. So we have to come back and do a more comprehensive project with that. So that's why that's still on the twenty-seven bond. The details have to be worked out. We haven't gotten that far yet, but it's, we're keeping it in that project so that we can finish the engineering.
If I drive to west Linden, am I going on one of those roads that you're gonna be repaving?
Yes.
Yes.
All the way down west Linden?
If you're coming in on the Comas, you will be going on one of the roads that are gonna, that could potentially be repaved.
All the way down west Linden, or just?
You know, if you're coming down on two Nakomas, then you're gonna cross on Forest.
Yeah.
One will be on there. What we're going down toward the lake. And then the portion of west Linden up to where you go into the maintenance facility for Grandview.
Okay. So even up to the maintenance area, that's all Grandview?
Yeah, anywhere where we think there'll be heavy truck traffic, we want to continue to look at.
Okay. That's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, could you, you didn't state your name, and do you live on east or west Linden, just so we have a?
I do. Thirty-eight. No.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Dale Goodhue.
And Dale, were you at the meeting we held in June with the residents of east and west Linden?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and again, if there's additional follow-up, I'm sure Tom would be happy to speak with you further offline.
Okay.
Thank you. Bob, do you have a question? If you want to come to the mic and state your name and address, that would be great.
Bob Fear, forty-nine eighty-four, Rubens Way, Niswa, Interlock and HOA. Okay, I would love to have a copy of that. I was just curious about, when you say easements, I'm like a retired facility development guy. What type of easements are these? Are these water easements? Are these easements for utilities, or what? There seem to be a lot of them, and this was a hundred years old. So I was just curious.
Yeah, well, they're very, like, like when we're doing the twenty-twenty-sixth street project, a lot of the construction is like outside of the right-of-way or the existing property lines that are out there. So in some places, we need permanent easements, where the, like, the roadway is outside of that. Or another is, we need permanent and then maybe like a temporary construction easement to go out even a little bit further. Or in some places, we just might need a temporary easement to do the grading. That would be outside of the right-of-way, I guess. One of the problems with a lot of the streets in the twenty-twenty-sixth street improvement project is the right-of-way varies, and it's not very consistent. And in some cases, nonexistent, I guess, people, so a lot of things that we're following is prescriptive use on some of those roadways. So then, if we need to go outside of the prescriptive use, then we get either a permanent easement or temporary easement.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions for Bill? Anything from council? Okay, thank you. Our city attorney is still not here yet, so I'm gonna jump to old business. The first item under old business is to review the special event and street use permits. I don't believe we have a motion here. It was just to keep this on the forefront. Maggie, if you wouldn't mind giving an update?
Yes, staff will be meeting in the next few weeks to kind of review and give our recommendation to council at the October meeting as our plan on the fee amount and days in advance, I think was your two key points that you wanted us to review on this process.
Thank you. Any comment or questions from council? Okay. Oh, shoot, still no Tom. Okay, oh, shoot, still no Tom. All right, the next under old business is the Roy's Landing Resolution, um, which Tom Pearson is not here yet. Um, so Stephen, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so you have in your packet a resolution to um, adopt the topographic divide determination that was discussed at our last regular meeting. Um, the resolution itself has been drafted by the city attorney, supplemented with exhibits, um, B of which was a late addition that came to your desk, um, or days uh before the meeting here. I do have additional copies if members of the public want to review Exhibit B, but it is also in the online posted packet in the packet upfront. So if anybody wants to see that, I have extras. What we have received is a proposed topographic divided line description so that any professional surveyor can go out to the site, follow along the footsteps um generationally from now into perpetuity. So um, this would be, just be a formal motion to adopt so that we can take the next step and get it over to the DNR for acceptance of the materials provided.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the Roy's Landing Resolution as presented by the city attorney.
I'll second.
Any questions uh for Stephen or discussion from council? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, new business, our first item is the swearing-in of our newest police officer, Dustin Hines. Dustin, if you wouldn't mind approaching.
Come on, chief.
Dustin, if you wouldn't mind repeating after me. Um, I, Dustin Hines, do solemnly swear.
I, Dustin Hines, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution and State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
No, faithfully discharge the duty of a police officer.
For the City of Nisswa and the State of Minnesota.
The City of Nisswa and State of Minnesota.
Congratulations.
Welcome. We're very excited to have you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Okay, next under new business, um, we have an item of changing the Minnesota state flag to the existing flag. Um, and there was an individual that brought this forward to council to be on the agenda. Uh, Craig, if you wanna come forward and quickly address the council.
Right, well, I mean, you know where I stand on it, so.
Oh, Craig, do you wanna just state your full name and your address, and then make sure you're talking into the mic so people can hear you?
Sure, uh, Craig Swanson, uh, Nisswa Harbor Drive, Royal Lake. And I've been living here for thirteen years already and wanted to be with all you rocks and cows people. That's why I moved up here, so. Um, it just really bothers me what this state has become and you know, it's our last bastion of government is our own little town and community. So if we fly that flag, it condones Walls and his gang and what they do to this state. And we can't have that. And uh we found out last Wednesday what happens when you disagree with them. Um, and so did uh Melissa Hortman. You know, she had the nerve to be bipartisan one time and cost her life, so. We gotta stay true to ourselves, what's right and what's wrong. It's not Republican Democrat, it's evil and good. And we're good people. So I don't care if we fly the old flag, but I just don't wanna see that new flag. And I hope you agree.
I'm, oh, I'm gonna move to see if council have any, has any questions or if we have a motion from council.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I'd be happy to make a motion to uh accept accept the change in this Minnesota state flag and to accept the donation resolution from Bob Fear for the Minnesota state flag.
Do we have a second?
So second it.
Bruce. I think Bruce, or did you second John?
Bruce beat me.
Okay. Um, is there any additional discussion from council? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, ne- I thought I saw Tom. Next, under new business is to rescind and remotion the finance specialist, uh specialist pay consideration. At our last meeting, uh, council had made a motion on this, and we were advised from our labor attorney that our motion was improper. So we need to rescind and remotion the finance specialist's pay. Do we have a motion?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna do my best at this, so bear with me. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that I move that the following motion approved by the city council at its August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting be rescinded in entirety. City council, which stated the city council proceed with a comprehensive job review for Maggie Wintler, as well as a wage adjustment to grade eighteen, step five at forty-nine dollars and one cent, to include also retroactive pay from the date of July twenty-first.
Second.
Do we have any discussion or questions from council? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm gonna jump back to Tom since he just walked in. Or should I wait till the end? Yeah, okay. All right, um, I'll go next to item number four, which is interim city administrator. So we have two items under here, appoint an interim city administrator, and then for the council to have discussion or a motion on a future interim city administrator. So can, go ahead, Maggie.
I think Jesse needs to make a new motion. He rescinded it, he needs to make a new motion.
Sorry. I missed that. Okay, yeah, sorry, go back.
Finish this, okay.
Okay, Jesse, do you have a second half of the motion?
Good. Okay, um, now this one simply being a little bit complicated due to the fact that Ms. Maggie has stepped up to the plate quite a bit for us on the administrative front. So not only she wearing her, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Uh, she lose, she uh fulfilling her duties as financial specialist, she's also been uh stepping up and filling the clerk duties. And now uh with this uh next motion after this topic, uh, likely the interim city administrator duties. Taking those into consideration, uh, her current pay as a financial specialist is thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents per hour. Uh, the differential from where she was at with the motion that we just rescinded was uh fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents to get to that total of forty-nine dollars and one cent. And the difference to uh grade twenty, step six, which is a suggestion by myself to get her to fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents for the cumulative uh duties of financial specialist, clerk, and interim city administrator. Is there any questions or feedback on that? I know, I'm trying. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Three roles for simultaneously right now. So what, from the understanding is, is that ultimately, when she's no longer fulfilling either one of these two additional duties, uh, we'll be having to revisit that, um, which I'll be clarifying here in this next motion. So, without further ado, um, I move that the finance specialist Maggie Wintler be paid a temporary pay differential of fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents per hour effective July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. With the differential from the prior motion already having been paid for the retroactive back pay, but for the back pay for the interim city administrator portion to September fourth. Until the earlier of the following, she is no longer assigned to perform duties and responsibilities that have resulted in material change and the nature, extent, and frequency of her job duties and responsibilities, or the job description, job evaluation, system points, and pay grade are adjusted for her job classifications, if at all.
Second.
I was gonna say, did everyone get that? Okay, um. Okay, um, any discussion or questions from council?
Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, now I'm gonna go to uh Tom, our city attorney. Tom, we, we passed over you, but we're coming back to you.
Uh, excuse me, hello, everybody. Sorry for being late. Came from another meeting. Um, I think at this agenda item, um, I don't.
Are you on the resolution?
Sorry, I was looking at F. You already did that.
We already did that.
Yeah, I just wanna point out, though, on that resolution, there's a couple blanks that need to be filled in there. And the Exhibit B has been populated, so we'll fill in those blanks and then populate that Exhibit B with this, with the, with the legal description and the sketch. And then we'll compile all that for signature. So I understand you probably approved it, so sorry about that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, I don't have anything at the agenda item E-two or E-one to report, other than other things that I'm on, involved in this agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, back to new business. Um, item number four, now we're on to interim city administrator. So uh, item A is we need to appoint an interim city administrator. On the interim city administrator, we had um, his last day with us, I think was last week.
September fourth.
September fourth.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you know what? I've been out of the country. Can't keep it straight. But do as councilmember Zahn had talked about, Maggie's been wearing a lot of hats, um, which we truly appreciate her stepping up. Do we have a motion uh for appointing an interim city administrator?
I'll make a motion to appoint Maggie as the interim city administrator. Or is that motion in there to read verbatim?
You just have to.
Both, both lines. I move that based upon the understanding reached by the city and Maggie on nine sixteen twenty-five, um, no, this is the pay one.
Here, let me see.
This is the pay motion. We're trying to do it correct this time, so we don't have to correct it from the attorney.
So the motion would be to assign the the duties and responsibilities of the city administrator role on an interim basis to Maggie?
Second.
Okay, so I made the motion. All right, um, any discussion or questions?
Are we missing anything just in regards to term?
Oh, sorry, the second part, yeah, let's, let's back that up though. Um, okay, so we would assign, the motion is to assign finance specialist Maggie Wintler some of the duties and responsibilities of city administrator on an interim basis effective September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Okay.
He's last day.
Oh, September fourth, sorry, effective September fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, and as understood between Maggie and the city, she would be paid additional pay effective September fourth, twenty-twenty-five. We will determine that amount on the next motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, now is there any discussion or questions?
But we did determine that amount.
Oh, you just did that.
Right.
We technically were supposed to do it after, but that's okay.
All right.
All right, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, um, item B under interim city administrator is for council discussion on future interim city administrators. So basically this is just to get council's perspective on do we want to search for an interim city administrator? Do we, we want to have Maggie just fill the role because our next motion is to look at a search firm for a permanent administrator? Councilmember Fraley, I think I'll start with you.
I just wanna get on to uh looking into the, the uh future city administrator position. So if we have to go in with Maggie as the interim for now, I just wanna get the ball rolling on the next step. That's where I stand.
Okay, sounds good. Councilmember London, your perspective?
My perspective is that Maggie has been a very loyal employee here. She does an excellent job. She's been wearing many hats, and I think she'll do an excellent job as the interim. And uh if I had my way or say, I'd keep her in there on a permanent basis if I could.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Three hats at one time, totally understood if you're comfortable with that. Have a question for you, though. Would, would you be interested in maintaining this interim city administrator position until we find that full-time city administrator?
Can I say yes now and change your mind later?
So let me ask you this then, Ms. Maggie. Wh-what about us bringing on a deputy clerk?
I think we're gonna fill some other seat position before we potentially get an administrator. I think that is just a given, just with the timeline of getting a search firm and getting things posted and interviews and backgrounds and things like that. I think once you figure out if the deputy city clerk or office administrator or whatever you want, um, whatever your next step is for organization, I think chances are we're gonna fill that seat first.
That would be my remarks, is I, I agree with that. Happy to hear that, too. Because if we could perhaps start with deputy clerk, and I think it's something we could discuss at the strategic planning session. Government structure, how do we wanna proceed above and beyond the state administrator slash clerk? And having a deputy clerk to be able to support because it's just a lot. And uh, busy time this year.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, that's what I'd say. I, I think that we're gonna cover this Thursday, you know, hopefully you don't have a good conclusion Thursday.
Yep, and I'm in agreement with everyone. I think we have our, our off-site Thursday. We have a lot of time together, so it'll be good discussion and dialogue to get a strong forward path that works uh optimally for everybody. So we don't necessarily need to have a motion tonight on this, um, but we have at least some good direction from council. So thank you, everybody. Um, the next item on the agenda is to approve the city administrator search firm. So we actually did discuss this, um, at our last meeting. We were presented with two search firms. Uh, we, we did not vote yet on a firm because Maggie was looking into grant opportunities, and I believe you have an update for council on that?
Yes, I did get notification on Monday that we were approved from Sourcewell for the fifteen-thousand-dollar grant for the search firm. So however we decide to move forward after Thursday, we can start working on job descriptions and work through what we're searching for.
And I think, um, if I'm remembering correctly from our last meeting, the conversation seemed pretty positive in the direction of the search firm, South Central Service Cooperative, SCS. Uh, see, there were several of us that did research and called references, and we had that dialogue at the last meeting. So is there a motion on the search firm?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city administrative search firm, South Central Service Cooperative, for the amount of fourteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars under the utilization of fifteen-thousand-dollar grant.
Second.
Do we have any additional discussion or questions from council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
So does that five-hundred? So does that five hundred dollar difference go back to the grant?
They will only issue us what we pay. So I gave a little bit of flexibility, not knowing if that quote would still stand from when it was actually pulled, like if it was thirty days or sixty days. So I want, I just thought I will do the whole thing and we will only get what we pay.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item is a notice of desire to negotiate clerical union and supervisors' union contracts. Um, the note I have on this is that Joe and I as personnel liaisons uh, began working with our labor attorney last, I think it was April or May, this previous April or May, and had an initial discussion. So those, uh, discussions are already underway. He drove up here, uh, from the Twin Cities and we had pretty much a, a full day work session. Um, and so if there is, uh, no reason for good change or cause, Joe and I would just continue those discussions and we'll need to work with our labor attorney and get on a conference call sooner rather than later, so we can continue to have those discussions forward and then we'd bring that back to council. Maggie?
Yes, I will just note that I did receive yesterday, um, the Teamsters. So the third union, all of, all of our contracts are due at the end of this year, so all three unions will be negotiating. So I did get their moving forward.
Okay, perfect. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, to accept the notice of desire to negotiate clerical union supervisor union contracts as discussed.
Say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next, pay application number four for the Gull Lake Trail. Um, Amber.
Good evening. Um, pretty straightforward on this pay application. Uh, happy to answer any questions on it if you have specifics or if you would like an update on the Gully Trail project in general.
Do we have any questions for Amber?
Do you want to do the update on the trail?
Yes, sure. Um, kind of ties into the next item, which is a change order. Um, many of you probably noticed that work was at a standstill for the greater part of August. Um, and so that is, um, explained in the change order, which is next. So there's some grading and curb corrections that were needed. Um, those did get, um, a resolution and so work did begin, I believe, late last week. Um, so they have started again. Um, we're still looking to finish substantial completion this fall. Yeah. Does that answer it?
Yeah, I mean, the, the contractor, um, during that period, um, he, it's kind of their schedule in a little ways. Um, some of that stuff that they wanted to do, they wanted to wait until the fencing guy was done. And then there was some problems with the fencing, so then there was, they had to wait for that. And then there was a problem with the curb and gutter, so then they had to wait for that. So the contractor decided to leave, um, basically on his own. Um, and come back when some of those stuff was resolved. They still gave us, uh, two to three weeks to finish from Monday, which would have them done before the end of September. Um, and our, um, substantial completion date is October fifteenth. So they should be still well within that. The final completion date is June first of twenty-twenty-six. So.
Any questions from council for Amber or Bill? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept pay application number four for the Gull Lake Trail project in the amounts of fifty thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
Say it.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is change order number five for the Gull Lake Trail. Amber?
Yep, so there's a description there, um, grading, curbing, gutter. Um, and so that one is, um, getting done as we, we speak. That's an agreement between Withseth and the contractor.
So to my, I may, my understanding is Withseth is accepting, Bill, it, Withseth is accepting responsibility for the cost of the change, this change order number five?
Right.
Okay.
So we
So essentially
The problem, we corrected it and we're accepting the responsibility of the repair, I guess you'd say, or fix.
And Withseth will then reimburse the costs associated with correcting the insufficient curb grade to the city of Nisswa.
Correct.
After the fact.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept change order number five for the Gull Lake Trail project in the amounts of thirty-five thousand four dollars twenty-two cents. With the understanding that What Seth has accept the responsibility for the cost of this change order and will be reimbursing it to the city of Nisswa.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, parks request for council action cooperative agreement amendment. Amber?
Yes, um, this one, I am seeking your authorization to execute an amendment with, uh, our agreement with the DNR. Um, it's extending the terms of that agreement for our access into Nisswa Lake Park. Um, the terms of that agreement need to be extended in order to satisfy the grant's land retention requirement. So the only amendment is the term of our agreement with the DNR for the access to Nisswa Lake Park.
Do we have any questions for Amber? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the agreement with the state of Minnesota for the access, uh, to the park.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have pay application number five for the city hall remodel. Tom?
Okay, so this is, oops, I got the wrong one. Anyway, it, this is the, I apologize, I don't have that in front of me. It's on my computer. Thank you. I am looking for approval of pay application number five for High Tech and Gordian for work completed through eight twenty-five, eight twenty-eight, excuse me, twenty-twenty-five. The pay application has been reviewed by me and Withseth for completion. The application is accurate and ready to be paid. Uh, this application is in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight ninety and ninety-nine cents. Barring any change orders, the amount remaining to finish the project is thirty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and three cents. And I'm not anticipating any more change orders just for your information.
Sounds good. Do we have any questions for Tom? Nobody? Do we have a motion?
We'll make a motion to accept the pay application as presented.
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Um, next is the ordinance amendment, chapter two. Um, regarding the regular city council meeting start time, we had discussed this at our last meeting of moving the start time for our council meetings from seven PM to six PM. Um, Maggie, you had a bit of an update to give on that?
Yes, um, in order, this is, the start time is actually in our ordinance. So in order to make this change, we have to have a public hearing to change the ordinance, which did not get posted in the staff changeover to have the public hearing at the September's meeting. So if everybody's okay without doing special meetings and such, that we can just post for our public hearing at our October meeting and then the time would change for November.
I think that sounds good. Does council have any other perspective? Nope. Okay, sounds like the plan, Maggie. Thank you. Okay, planning and zoning, development agreement, the Thomas Allen Homes. Um, Stephen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so we have before us a second amendment for the developer agreement for Nisswa crossings. Uh, the previous letter of credit for this development is expiring. And the developers renewing through their financial institution. Uh, this attached amendment reviews, renews the agreement between the developer and the city of Nisswa, acknowledging the letter of credit and the work remaining to complete the infrastructure for their project.
I think the, uh, developer agreement itself was drafted by our city attorney. Yes, Ian put up.
Do we have any questions for Stephen? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the developer agreement as presented.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, next, planning and zoning, chapter twenty, ordinance revisions. Stephen?
Thank you, Ian. Uh, so we have a ordinance review, uh, from Chris Pence, the comparative analysis uh, between Crowing County's ordinances for land use and development and the city of Nisswas. Uh, this information was also presented to the planning commission at the regular meeting in September. Um, where they provided, um, general feedback that's, uh, is in support of these recommendations that were presented by the consultant, Chris Pence. Um, in the, your attachment, you have both a summary and an evaluation report. Um, in general, the city has taken a lot of strides to calibrate our ordinances and this would be just another of those ventures.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Everyone's quiet tonight. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept chapter twenty ordinance revisions as presented.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Um, lastly, for planning and zoning is the commission board of adjustment member um, accepting the resignation and posting the vacancy, Stephen.
Right, so yes, we did have a resignation and an opening on our planning commission and board of adjustment. Um, the member Danny Mandell has, uh, submitted his resignation, so this would be, I guess, two motions, one to um, accept the resignation as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Also move.
Second.
Okay, any additional questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Metamare will make a motion to post vacancy for planning commission board of adjustments seat.
Thank you, councilmember Fraley. Do we have a second? Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And to everyone here, we, we do have a vacancy now on the planning and zoning um, commission. So if you have any interest or know anyone that does, um, once the vacancy is posted, please apply. Okay, uh, police, resolution for twenty-twenty-six budgeted squad order. Chief Schamanski.
Thank you. Um, looking to get permission to purchase our two thousand twenty-six squad. The, uh, bid here is the state bid from ten forty-four from St. Cloud for forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-four cents. The squad it will be replacing is currently out of commission. We're waiting for an estimate on that to see if it's even worth fixing at this point. Um, so we're looking to kind of get the ball rolling so we don't fall behind with squad cars again.
Do we have any questions for the chief? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, purchase the, uh, squad car in the two thousand twenty-six budget.
I'll second.
All right, any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And then, uh, next up, Todd, approve recommendation to hire police officer.
Yes, we did, uh, interviews earlier this month. A conditional job offer was made to Lucas Borgeding. Currently working for the sheriff's office with Bolt and Water and Court Security and other recreational positions there. Uh, offer is for grade eleven, step one of the two thousand twenty-five Teamsters contract. It is, uh, pending successful completion of a background check, medical exam, psychological exam, all of the requirements and your approval.
Do we have any questions for the chief? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to hire the, uh, new police officer.
And I'll second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Correct. This will fill out the department and bring us back to
Correct, we'll be fully staffed.
Wonderful.
Full strength.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is a public works request for council action, lift station pump replacement and repairs. Tom?
Yes, so this, uh, request is for uh, a new pump in lift station number three. It's a new twenty horsepower pump. The cost is thirty-six thousand two fifty-four. Um, we looked into rebuilding the existing pump that's in there and it was nearly twenty-nine thousand dollars, so we're recommending replacing the pump. The funds we have for this, uh, come from the sewer department budget, lift station replacement fund. And, uh, part of your packet was a quote from electric pump for the replacement. Uh, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Tom?
I'll make a motion that we, um, accept this recommendation from Tom to repair this lift station number three pump.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Um, and last, under new business, is the organizational assessment report discussion. Um, I wanted to just share here that the council voted, um, earlier this summer to hire a consultant to provide a depthful and strategic recommendation to the city on how to best structure our organization moving forward. That would set the city up for long-term success. Uh, irrespective of the people and the places, right? Because we're looking at the organization as a whole, not the people who are here at a point, a point in time. Um, after receiving the report out of that organizational assessment, I personally felt that, felt that the report fell short in many areas. So from examining reports in other municipalities, counties, like within our uh, state, strong organizational assessments provide from my lens, things like clear strategic recommendations. So they don't just identify weaknesses, they propose pathways forward. That could include different structural models for the organization um, with advantages and disadvantages and different options that, um, outlines that. Also, I think that good organizational reports offer mul- again, multiple pathways instead of just a vague, this is how we think you should do it, again, presenting the pros and cons of each of those pathways. So when elected leaders um, are reviewing it, they can weigh all those different options. Um, I also think good assessments should include a budget, a budgetary impact. So all the recommendations made, how much will each option cost? What are the ongoing versus upfront expenses? What savings might be realized over time? What financial risks might be involved, really to be holistic on that front? Also to provide, um, timelines and an implementation roadmap of when changes could happen. Um, what steps are involved, what milestones should be expected and by when, who does what? And then also just benchmarking and comparing to peer organizations, so other municipalities in the area and also the state. And then having measurable performance metrics and accountability structures. So I just feel like in the assessment that we received, that's where this particular one fell short. Um, there is some information in there that is protected through data privacy, so we are not allowed to discuss that openly as council. But I just wanted to open, um, with that and I guess, uh, councilmember Hall, I'll turn it to you for anything to add.
If I may.
Oh, Tom.
Just to help guide that conversation with respect to the con- Yeah, not speaking into it, sorry. Just to help guide that conversation with respect to the contents of that report, just want to, um, stress to you that um, specific references made by employees of the city about other employees of the city should not be discussed specifically. Generally, you can talk about outcomes that are listed in the report, but not making reference to any specific employee comments about one another. Um, with respect to elected officials, there's a different a different rule about that. Um, public officials, to the extent that they're referenced in, uh, um, a report like this that is not private data, that is public, can be discussed. Um, I don't really recommend, uh, going through and necessarily discussing specifics, but I'm just cautioning you that, um, employee comments about each other, et cetera, are private. Can't be discussed, identified specifically. Public, of, of public officials, elected officials don't have that same constraint. Any questions about that?
Any questions for Tom? Okay, uh, councilmember Hall, if you have anything you want to start with?
Yeah, I, I guess I don't have much. I, I agree with what Jennifer said. Um, I feel the report felt very short of, I guess, my expectations of it or, you know, maybe what I was led to believe that it was. Um, I don't know that it allow, offers offers a offers a lot of uh, organizational assessment to move forward, you know? Uh, my own personal kind of opinion or belief where we're at with assessment, you know? There's a lot of stuff that's been put out on social media or out in the media, you know, during this, I'll say, you know, kind of transitional time for the city of Nisswa. But um, as we work through this organizational process, I'm committed myself to finding the right people. We have a lot of great um, staff here, great people. Um, if it takes a half a dozen people to, to find the right pit, or I'm sorry, to find the right fit, um, great. You know, sometimes it's like, you know, we've had a few people come and go in an interim and um, that's all right. It's a unique town, unique businesses, um, a special town, a special place. And uh, it's important uh, to me as we move through this organizational process that um, that we just get the right people in there to um, continue to make Nisswa what it is. Great place to live.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Uh, Councilmember Zon.
Uh, that report is what it is. I mean, we have uh, I think on our own assessment as a council, individuals, we know that we have a monumental task ahead of us uh, with uh, with the preliminary budgets and the levies accordingly. Uh, we also know that we have some gaps on the administrative front that has been difficult to, to fill and sustain. So uh, urging all of us to continue to try to work together, utilize this full day session that we have on Thursday to be able to walk out of there feeling emboldened, feeling confident. So we have a path forward. Uh, if we do not, we do a disservice to them and everybody else within this town. Uh, I do understand that uh, I don't think this report is exactly what any of us really expected. Um, however, uh, let us try to take some of the good from that report to be able to understand what potential suggestions that were made in there for us to be able to determine our actual government structure, specifically in regards to the timing of us seeking to fill these uh, additional positions. Um, so that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember London.
The report is what it is. I think we should uh, just move forward in the best interest of the city and uh, keep Nisswa strong and all work together.
Thank you. Councilmember Fraley.
Uh, I agree. Um, like I've said, uh, start with day one. There's some good ideas in there to, to where we can accomplish. Let's just move forward, work together. Um, I've always said that I can work with anybody. Well, let's just do that. Cause these are the people that we are here for. I'm not here for myself. I'm here for the people.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion from council?
No, I agree. I, I think one of the things that we want the public to know is we're all unified and wanting to move forward in a positive direction and uh, make this city great and go forward.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, next up are council and liaison reports. Um, I don't have a ton to report. I just wanna state, um, it's been about eight and a half months um, since I was sworn in as a new mayor for the city of Nisswa. And it has been an absolute honor and privilege to work alongside everybody, fellow council members, staff, uh, business leaders and residents. Um, I think the most positive part of my experience has just been getting to know people, to understand what issues matter to them, to understand the impact that we have, you know, each carrying one vote up here to try to bring positive change to the city and really listen to all of your voices. And I do believe very strongly that everyone up here cares deeply about the city and putting uh, the people's voices first. And as we all said during this organizational assessment, I, I know we're all committed. And even though we've had some bumps in the road here, as we've had to go with some turnover in key staff positions, I think that we are through the, you know, maybe bumpiest part of the road and we're looking to move forward in a very positive direction. So again, I just want to thank everybody because it truly is an honor and pleasure to serve. And my door is always open, my phone's always available, I'm always uh, open for texts. So love to just connect with people and see what we can do to be helpful. Um, council member reports, uh, why don't we start with you, Councilmember Fraley?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember London.
Nothing.
Councilmember Zon.
Nothing.
Councilmember Hall.
Nothing.
Okay. Um, la- or next on the agenda are just the announcements and upcoming meeting dates. So we've referenced this a couple times in this session, but we do have a city council retreat on Thursday from eight to four thirty over at the community center. So if anyone, you know, wants to join us for the day and observe, please feel free. And then uh, September twenty-fourth is the Public Works Committee meeting. And then I do want to note that on September thirtieth, we do have scheduled to do our fall town hall meeting at the community center. We did a spring town hall in May. We had a great turnout. I think over a hundred people were there. All of the council was there. We were there to be very transparent about kind of core issues and areas for the city and answer questions. So we're seeking to do the same. So spread the word and we'll get communication out and then you can see the October schedule as well. Um, so if we don't have anything else, a motion, or do you have something?
Just this weekend, Pancake Breakfast, support the fire department over at the A and W. And then it's also the barbecue rib cook-off over at the Pickle, so.
Are they doing the breakfast burritos at A and W again?
Yes.
They are the best ever.
Come out, support the fire department in the morning and the great activities in the afternoon over at the Pickle with Barbecue Fest.
Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna say it again, they're the best breakfast burritos you've ever had in life, from A and W.
All right, a motion to adjourn would now be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.